We're a little rusty here.
Yeah. All right, commissioners, your meeting is live.
Right there. All right. Well, good morning. Welcome to the June twenty-third meeting, the Riley County Commission. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would comment.
Public.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Cobrely, we give you just one minute here. This Jacob Hansen, interim Riley County Councilor, just would ask that we adjust the agenda a lot for about five minutes for the Health Department to speak during my administrative time.
Yeah.
Okay. We can do that.
Good morning. My name is Troy Cobrely, fifty-three oh four Tara Heights Drive, Manhattan. Just here again, just to kind of reiterate some of the issues that we're having with short-term rentals and some of the compliance issues that I've dealt with, dealing with the Planning and Zoning Director and the Compliance Specialist. I met with Amanda Webb and Mr. Hanson last Tuesday, and we kind of went over some of the complaints that I had filed against one of the short-term rentals and kind of a summary on it, and Mr. Hanson might be able to kind of confirm some or answer some of that, was that most of the complaints that we've had would never turn into violations just because of the way the regulation is written and the way it's stated, that whether we have a noise complaint or a violation of, or what we feel is a violation of the regulation. The way the regulation's written, the way I understand it, would never rise to the level of a violation or risk the chance of losing their license. And so I guess that kind of my take out of that whole meeting was the chances of anybody ever losing a license or getting a violation is slim to none. And even though the short-term rental person, property owner, might have violated, but as long as they're working with Riley County Planning and zoning, it will never rise to that level. And so I guess that's just one more of the issues of us as neighbors and concerned citizens that when it comes to having issues, if we come to the county and present things that are actually complaints, then it never rises to that level. So it seems like what we do is just basically constant nuisance. And so I'm just wanting to somewhat clarify with the Board of Commissioners is that you're understanding that nothing out of that regulation would, or do you understand that the regulation could violate and could possibly lose a license?
Yeah. I thought so.
Yeah. I mean, this is an issue, as I've said before, it's fine if you come in and speak about it. It's never a bad thing to bring it to the service, but state's going to have to work with us on setting up a way to put authority in there to put teeth in that and to my knowledge, they're not interested in doing that.
Yeah, and what I'm just stating is, as far as with the Riley County Regulation,
Yeah.
you're clear that nothing will rise to the level of violating and losing license, even though it does state it. It does state that you can be violated, and if violations two or more, then it turns into potentially losing a license.
I think I've been working on this pretty much my entire time I've been here. So I think part of the concern with us is more of safety, life, health, security. Like to know what's going on there, because if we have to send, for instance, fire, EMS, first responders, those sort of things, we kind of have a general knowledge of what's going on there. That's really the basis for the licensure, because as we've said, we can't, we can't, we don't have any teeth in the authority side of it enough. If we're able to do that, then we can reform said regulations and obviously put that in there, but it's a legislative process. I would say if we started this year on it, it would probably take us two years at the very minimum to do that, and it can be done. It certainly could be done. I would encourage that dialogue back and forth on there to potentially do that. I think the thing in discussions, because we've had these discussions and conferences is it really only applies to a handful of counties too. And we just happen to be one of the cities. Counties, so it's a struggle. I really do understand your pain.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I totally understand that as far as dealing with you know, the risk of somebody getting injured or death, and that's why one or two of the complaints dealt with egress windows, and I talked about, also put in a personal complaint against Darren Hobbs, the Compliance Specialist, that he wasn't aware or didn't understand the regulation. And so when I brought that up of how the regulation should be understood, and then I also talked to Amanda, and it was kind of gray on that as far as understood, and that's the part of I don't think they were fully understanding when they went out to inspect, and they looked at the window and said, oh, there's a window and a door. It meets regulation, even though it didn't. And so when I brought up those complaints, and then when I talked to Amanda about it, she said those complaints probably won't be turned into violations, because as long as they're working with us, it will never, never turn into a violation. And I think that's some of the concern is if you have multiple complaints dealing with health and safety, but they're never violated, then how do you get to a point to where possibly a short-term rental licensee continues to operate outside? Because I know that there's other short-term rentals out there in the county that have not had somebody go through them and inspect them thoroughly. So I think that's just something that
Well, and part of that too is, is we don't always know what's there and out there, and we're ever trying to figure that that point of it out too, so.
Yeah, but I think the part of, like, especially if Darren's going to go out and inspect those homes, I think he thoroughly now needs to understand the regulations and inspect it properly rather than kind of half-hearted attempt at checking the boxes, so. But that was my main complaint this morning, just trying to deal with, or get a better understanding, if you guys are aware, that more than likely, no one will ever be violated, no one will ever be losing the license.
I think just about every time we discuss this, I mention that we have no authority to do anything. Why are we discussing? We continue about once every, what, two months or so, this topic comes up and
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'd like to have solvency for it. I really would.
And that's why I've recommended last year to the Planning and Zoning Board that I think we should pull that, pull that short-term rental out of residential out in the rural communities, because I think, I think since we don't have anything to sink our teeth in, I think that's where you're risking more neighborhoods or more citizens to something that you can't back up with law. And I think if you could pull that regulation out, out of residential until, until the state does come up with something, I think that would be a remedy that would actually allow safety for residents in the neighborhood.
Go ahead.
The general concern, and I know Mr. Cobrely, and I talked about this, you know, last week, as he discussed, is when considering regulations on short-term rentals, you're really dealing with some constitutional issues of depriving people of the enjoyment of their property. So you, when you create regulations such as these, you have to really tie them, of course, to a public health, a public good, something to that effect. And when you remedy, or you're going through the process of getting into compliance, so that is the case, it really takes out, because you're going to, if you go to, if you revoke somebody's license, you're probably going to get sued over it, then when you go to court and then you show that they're going to be in compliance, the case gets thrown out, and it's all a waste of everybody's time. And that's the problem.
Well, say for instance, you were saying there was a window that was not under regulation. It was too small for egress or?
Too small, as well as, like in basement windows, or normal basement windows in older homes, when the sill plate
It's clear up there, you can't get out of it.
It has to be forty-eight inches and below, and then if it's above that forty-eight inches, you can make certain adjustments of making permanent steps mounted to the wall to where somebody can actually egress. But it was, that's the thing that when I spoke to Darren Hobbs weeks ago about it, he said, no, egress only means for basement, basement homes or basement windows. And I said, no, egress is for every bedroom. So if you're upstairs or on the main level, if you only have one, one point of entry and exit, then that does not meet egress standards. And so those windows or doors have to meet certain sizes, and if they don't, but it's just a matter of if he, if he inspects and says, oh, that window's good enough, and so that room doesn't meet compliance, then you get into potential homes that are, in order to remedy that, you'd have to replace windows or adjust things, or maybe can reduce the size of the documents as far as being a rental.
And in this case, just
Violation.
Yeah, and just so the board has context that the, our, you know, planning and zoning is working with this particular individual, making sure one, that the is not advertised as a bedroom where this window currently is, and two, that, and if they want to use it as a bedroom, they need to install those steps in order to do so, and that's been communicated to the short-term rental owner.
And I think, but I think that's where you get into of, it's communicated to the short-term rental, but they're still renting as under the violation. And so even though the county says they're working with us, they're still renting it as a four-bedroom, still with issues. And that's the part of, if it's not, if there's no violation, no issues, and they continue to rent it, what's going to persuade them to actually bring it up to code or up to regulation and work that, other than saying, we're working, so. But thank you very much.
Public comments? Oh, good commissioners.
Okay. Well, been kind of a week. Tuesday afternoon, had an emergency teams call with the NICO Community Economic Development Workforce Steering Committee, discussed a couple additional late resolutions that will be added to the list that we'll be discussing in a special meeting, actually on Friday. These resolutions were developed and written by several members of the subcommittees in response to several related new federal initiatives on private-public partnerships, on housing through HUD, and clarification on rural agricultural programs through the USDA. After discussion, both resolutions were approved. Also on Tuesday, I listened in on NICO's webinar titled Building Trust, the Framework for Responsible AI. Guest speakers discussed accountability, reliability, safety, privacy, security, fairness, non-discrimination, as well as human oversight and the autonomy of these systems and programs. And they also shared insights and experienced some proper deployment of those programs. Wednesday afternoon, attended the June Policy Board meeting in Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization. After some public comments, we heard a financial and staff update from the organization, which included the upcoming tiers application process and updates on all the core NPO documents. Federal policies regulating that there needs to be changes made to those, so those will be upcoming throughout the summer and early fall. Approved the minutes from the May twenty-first meeting. Only other action item we had was the Amendment Number Eight, the Transportation Improvement Plan. Some discussion items included the US Corridor, US Twenty-four Corridor Management Plan and the Second Connection Cost-Benefit Analysis. Of course, those MOUs we signed on Monday, I believe City Commission signed those on Tuesday. They were going to, I guess, sign those Potawatomi County on Thursday, so. So sure, KDOT's got all that information, is moving forward on that. Friday morning, took a tour of the Health Department Administration and Clinic Building with Diane Creek, Riley County Health Department Director, Michael Ruskella, Executive Director of Ponte Mental Health, see in the future what type of services and programming may be possible, changes occur at that location. Thought it went, overall went pretty well. We had brainstormed some really good possibilities. Of course, that's depending on what happens with the facility and that space and need study as it gets seen through. Friday afternoon, came over to the courthouse and took in jury, the jury selection process with Judge Bannister in District Court. It was great to have the opportunity to see what the actual process is, as I've never actually done jury duty. I've just been summoned for it. So it's kind of interesting to see what both the defense and prosecution does in terms of questions, and there was about fifty people in the room and yeah, that was the fun part. The bad part was it's really embarrassing to watch from a space perspective. I mean, everybody's literally on top of each other and that's kind of reroute everything to kind of get everybody in. Everybody's hanging out in the hallway, and it's not a good process for these larger and kind of more high-profile cases such as this one, such the one that's being tried this week. This jury was being made too, so. Good to see. But still, improvements need to be made, for sure, so. Late Friday afternoon, I met with Kent Glasscock from the Flint Hills Regional Council to discuss a few items. Housing and grant work were the major topics of discussion, rural needs and updates on work with the council and what the council is doing, the overall direction and vision for the agency was also discussed. Of course, appreciated time, the dialogue, and just the passing around of ideas just in general. And then the weekend, I spent inside, it was too hot, humid and windy to do anything, so hopefully get some rain tonight. That's about all I got.
So make it more humid.
Yeah, but that's going to come in at some point in time anyway, so at least everything may stay green instead of getting parched.
That's true. Oh, well, I got, I got back late yesterday afternoon. Don't really have any comments, except it's good to be back home. Trying to catch up, how to catch up with watering and all sorts of things when I got in and and so I really don't have any comments, other than I'm happy to be back.
Well, back last week, which for some reason I was off, not having that meeting Thursday. I was off on what day it was. I'm too, I've got too much of a routine, I guess.
Did you make this thing called calendar?
I know, but it didn't.
They put days on there.
The one in here wasn't working.
I know.
But Monday after our meeting, I met with a University Park resident, go over some of their problems that they're having out there. And he was going up to talk to Jacob, I assume you've
He sure didn't.
Sure did. Got new, there's always something fun going on up there.
Oh, for sure, and that's gone on for decades, Commissioners.
Yeah. And at noon was the Law Board meeting, and in the public comment, we heard from the attorney from one of this CBD shops. They feel that it's uneven enforcement of regulations on what can be sold, and it has shown up in the paper and on the news that they are trying to enforce it. This we felt they were getting singled out more than others and discussion on how the police are going to enforce those things. It's still an evolving process on how much, and even because the Attorney General has ruled on what is, what isn't allowed, and there's a lot more to that than I realized.
Oh, yeah.
That, and then we had the final review of the six. I tried to get a few more cuts, but no one else seemed, was in favor of them, so final number's an increase of five, four percent. Also then discussed possible full-body scanner for the jail, that just kind of telling us kind of what it was and notice, you know, it's more discussion, it wasn't decision made, just what, what options are available. Tuesday, we had a small group meeting to iron out some of the details of our move, the FCRC building, and we can, I don't know if you got those.
Oh, as part of that tour on Friday, I went over there and looked at that.
Okay, because there's, just, we've had some questions, and I've got
I'm just going to kind of move everything over into one building instead of having to walk here and there and there.
There's some other ones.
Playing ladder or whatever you want to call it.
Talk about at the end here. Then Wednesday was Juvenile Detention Center, passed the twenty-six budget, which was basically flat, but our share of costs will go up because of increased use of the facility by Riley County. Numbers have gone up
Drastically.
drastically the last two years. And it's it's funded on a five-year average, and it's what percentage, and our percentage is going up. And then we also started discussion on succession planning, because the executive director is going to be retiring mid-year next year. Looking at different options, what we're going to do on that. But further, appreciating giving us that much notice, we start, we knew it was coming, but
It's a pretty important position to
Get it lined out, and that's all I've got.
Ready for business, Commissioners? First time I have, need a motion to approve renewal of planned service agreement with Johnson Controls for the Riley County Law Enforcement Center.
Remember, did we do something with this already, and this is an update or?
No.
This is one for the Law Enforcement Center.
Yeah.
Right, this one just came in about a week and a half ago. So yeah, it's just the contract, it's a five-year renewal.
We updated something on controls, but sorry, contractually there, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense. Go ahead, make a motion to approve Johnson Controls Contract as presented.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the Johnson Controls Contract as presented, all in favor.
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next commissioning motion to approve the highway use permit with KNW Underground granting permission, move and replace hand pole for Lumen Technologies.
I would make a motion to approve the highway use permit granting KNW Underground permission to complete work as outlined in the permit application.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the highway use permit, granting KNW Underground permission to complete work as outlined in the application. All in favor?
Aye, Chair, please sign. Yeah, next commissioner, tax rule corrections.
Go ahead, move to approve the tax rule corrections as written.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the tax rule correction as presented, all in favor.
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next commissioner, the Riley County Employee Action Forum, Ben Moore, new hire volunteer firefighter. Connor Jewett, volunteer firefighter in the Fire District Separation of Service. All three please sign. He changes the minutes, Commissioners?
Want to make a motion to approve the minutes as written from the June sixteenth meeting of the Riley County Commission?
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June sixteenth meeting, all in favor.
I'm Danny Jones, look, Commissioners. Any items for next week's press conference?
I just want to take a flip me off with the next couple.
I mean, that is your right.
Fortunately, we're going to have to face at the same point.
Doesn't go away. The deadlines just
Yeah. We'll have longer meetings then.
Are you in a special meeting? Next commission, extension at nine o'clock.
Yeah, we're great.
Sure. Oh, they got that. Yeah, I've got decide which offices and
I thought you had decided yours.
I've been, I've been over there to see what's
That's why we can get there a little early, kind of go through it.
When are we going to do this?
Before, when we go over to the dedication.
Okay.
And go through. It just takes that long, it's good as far into the building, because one zigzag through all the
So we didn't have offices close to the
One of those.
One?
Yeah.
Oh.
The other ones are down the hall and around, around the corner.
But also, they're not moving our desks. I'll just box up what you want to use, because desks, they have new desks there, so we're not moving our desks, and we will have access to our offices here.
Okay.
Really? They're not going to?
Yeah, you know, no, they're, yeah. And definitely note, when, except when they're doing the windows, you know, also, that would be a test, but other times we could, if you there's something you don't think you need, you can leave it there, come back and look at it later. And then also to move our parking signs over there.
Yeah, they did say it was going to be on the northwest corner of the new parking lot over there.
It's in the EMS parking lot. Bouncing around.
They were still working on it on Friday, so they didn't know what spots, for sure, yeah.
You know, it's a thought I think the Commissioners need to think about is, after they do the windows here and you're already displaced, would that not be a good time to just renovate this whole thing? I mean, seriously, because it's one of the top ones, so I think you just need to think about that, which you might want to change that philosophy, because it just makes sense. These windows get done, why not just do it?
I think we need to, I've got an idea for rearranging things, so I'm thinking that this screen should go over there, because we want, all these windows are going to be new, and it's probably not wise to have a screen up against windows. Let's put it over there and have presenter there and
Just let's move us along. However, it gets to be done, that'd be the prime time to do, and then move again in the future.
I'm going to drop this.
Kind of like what you're getting, it's doing, kind of rusty, it's doing now moving. Instead of twice moving out back.
And this was one of the easiest places to do it, and one of the next steps soon, because it's ready. So why move again in the future?
Yeah.
And why not just get everything out at the beginning?
It's probably been a long time since.
I don't need to, this trend's falling off on the pillars or
This whole thing, then this.
Ready for Daniel?
No, I'm going to come here, just measuring some.
Well, good morning. I'm a little later than less of a month with the holiday last week. But jumped to the trace this morning, it's my pleasure to bring to you Lindsay Shorter, our new Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent. Asked if she would come over and say a little bit about herself, introduce herself. She's been on the job for, this is her third week starting now. Our new agriculture and natural resources agent. I asked if she would come over and say a little bit about herself, introduce herself. She's been on the job for this her third week starting now. And she's one of the uh agents there against her around the state, you know, month and a half before fair, so she's. Oh, she's been doing a great job, but uh um she had to hit the ground running. I don't think she had much choice, so but I'll let Lindsay say if you worked on it, so.
Thanks, Daniel. So like Daniel said, my name is Lindsay Shorter. I'm the new Ag and Natural Resources Extension Agent here in Riley County. Obviously, I'll have some responsibilities for four H youth livestock as well. Well, we joke that, yeah, we're jumping into fair season, but luckily I'm not new to extension, so I at least know kind of what I'm doing. Um, I was down in Greenwood County for five years and I served as the um ag agent, the four H agent and the county director. So I I can wear many hats or jump in wherever we need to be, but um my degrees are all in ag business. I graduated from Kansas State. For that, I was actually a Riley County High School graduate. So um this is local moving home. I'm so excited to be. Moving closer to family and our family operation here in Riley County. But like I said, my degrees are all in ag business. I was an extension in Greenwood County. Uh, my husband and I also have managed some large scale ranches, both in Kansas and Oklahoma, so have some real world knowledge there. So excited to be jumping in and helping the farmers and ranchers here in Riley County answer any of their ag related questions as well as helping with any of our. Four H youth development uh questions as well. So happy to answer any questions y'all might have, but just wanted to kind of put a face with the name and. Um, know who's up in the extension office. So happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to meet all of y'all.
I've I've heard you were coming for a while. Everybody in North County knows.
Dad was a little excited. I think he told so too many people. But it's great to meet y'all. If y'all ever need anything, please feel free to reach out.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Daniel. Appreciate it. Next commission, Bob Isaac at nine fifteen. Okay, great. Get you here for a minute.
I've heard of emails that I can finally access. I had everything shut and I was trying to access emails when I was in Virginia. Couldn't get in, just nothing. So I said, okay, we shut off.
Well, that made it easier.
Till today.
Yeah, you always gotta get cut up sometime.
Yeah, it was really good. Good to see my daughter spend some time with her. Still going on through all sorts of stuff with federal government, but she's hanging on. What did you go to DC for?
Uh huh, it was. Through the high school, it was with uh high school students from uh Riley County and uh. Manhattan as well. There was one school of kids, but it's an odd thing because. Even the teacher, my wife's a teacher there, just retired, but and her sister went as school representatives. But this organization puts it together, say you have no responsibility, you just need to be there. And so we didn't have, and really, we had no responsibility. Their staff did it all. Their staff do it all, everything. So we were just there kind of shadowing along. And unfortunately, you know, it was a large enough group, there was, was they had a big first class tour bus to take everyone around. But unfortunately, there was three sh- three people too many, so I got bumped down to a black Cadillac Escalade.
Got like a congressman up there, didn't you?
Yeah, problems with the ball parade people there. There's probably a ton of people.
Did not, did not. We got to walk right through where it was all being set up and I walked from here to you to. The military personnel all lined up for the parade, three hours in advance and all the equipment, but. Mm mm, they they had a lot of areas fenced off, so you had to do more walking, you know, but no problems at all, you know. With that many kids and stuff, they didn't want to stay down there for the parade. And so we left before that, about the time we were leaving, uh people on the subway were coming up, but we never, knock on wood, never had any problems at all.
Yeah.
I was surprised how clean a city it is, how nicely manicured it is. It was.
Usually there's a lot of construction going on road wise all the time.
Really clean city and really well, you know, the landscaping and all the buildings and streets.
It's a new place to visit. So much to see and do. I mean, you can spend months going through everything.
Yeah, and that's one of those things, you know, like the Holocaust, we'd have liked to have had more time there. We're on a schedule to get to the next, you know, with two over. But we got to see the whole thing, but not necessarily read all the details and certain things.
That's one thing I learned very quick.
Someplace to go back to.
Yeah, I don't know that I need to go back, you know, because I got other things I want to do and it's one of. Things that I've liked to have gone to in my life and I got the opportunity, so I went, but I would have probably used my vacation time to go there.
You spent hours in the other one.
It was neat. It was well worth it, sure. And we had nice cool weather, sixties.
Yeah, it was.
One, first day was hot and then it was, people were cool and cold, you know, wearing long sleeve shirts and jackets. I was like.
Yeah.
Supposed to do.
It started heating up that Friday, you know, like where Joel lives is not that far away.
Again, C L E all day, so that's.
It started getting hot.
George Washington's uh house and all that and the farm was really neat.
Sure.
Amazing views on the backside of that house of the river and.
Oh, yeah, that's gorgeous place.
And that's one area where we really didn't get enough time to really spend that I'd like to have.
Well, they have like Monticello down where she lives, but I haven't been to that.
Yeah.
So it was too hot. We were looking at, what about going to Monticello? And it was supposedly the blooms and everything were beautiful. And it was really hot.
Yeah, okay.
She's not a museum person. Husband's a museum person. He likes to go on the.
Yeah.
Also, we got such a lot of moving gardens.
Oh, yeah.
So needs the Washington Monument, you know, you drive by, you see the big monuments sticking up, but it's not until you get to it and you see, I mean.
Yeah.
The monuments, the smaller part of it, the rest of it that's built around there is so much more impressive.
Fences around it so you couldn't even get get up to it, let alone go into it. Think the impressive thing to me is they built up the ground up there too, so while it's polished structure in Washington DC, it's extra tall because of. Topography.
But yeah, the stuff around the bottom, to me, was so much more impressive. It was really cool. Lincoln Memorial and all that is one of them there.
I can't wait till they get that basement museum done.
Yeah, you were talking about.
Oh, that's gonna be amazing.
Yeah, I I usually go to the art museum. I love the art museum. National Gallery of Art.
Yeah, we didn't get to do that type of stuff for like Smithsonian and stuff, you know, but you get to see all the memorials, you know, World War Two. Of course, they're all right there together, so they're easy to see.
One with those life size figures. World War Two, that's those are crazy.
Was that the Korea? That's Korean.
Korean.
Oh, is it Korean?
World War One's over across the way. That's the only one that's not. That's across the way over there from the White House.
Grizzly and cool that day.
Yeah.
It's such a long walk too to the memorial Washington. Well, it's like right along with the water there and.
Well, I. Second time, second time I was out there, I did that and then I walked back to the other end, down to the FDR and the George Mason and Martin Luther King. And came back up around with a few Thomas Jefferson and I got back to the hotel and I have to admit, my legs were kind of hurting. Because I walked all the way back up to the hotel from there too.
We found her. First time we went, oh, let's go here, we went here, we, um, said, no, no, let's, tomorrow, we're gonna go here and like these.
Yes.
It's like saying, first day we got back, our legs were dead because we kept saying, so I wouldn't listen to it. So we'd go there. Then we decided to organize and do everything in this area.
That was so nice, you know, Catherine asking, what was our responsibility? Was none, including setting up the tours is that. They all knew where to go and the place, the best place at the park and how to get there. So we didn't have any lost time, you know, not knowing what we were doing, you know? It was all, they all been there many times, of course, the company has, so it was great. Actually saw um. Yeah, Patrick with D H S. Uh huh, saw him there. He was, he was with an extension group and my wife knew a bunch of the kids.
Oh, really?
Must have been Pot County Extension or something up there. Yeah, we were getting blown on the bus, they were getting off, shook his hands, said aye and. My wife knew several of the kids, so.
So that's what I can do.
Clean the email. There's looked at junk and there was one that wasn't junk, like somebody won. So I just said, who was the inbox? Well, it was only six weeks ago, because now I can't find it.
Yeah, I know.
I need to respond to it because they had some questions, but if you respond to it.
Sometimes, first thing I do every day, we we believe one of this junk, sometimes I get delete happy. I sent you that, like, uh.
Oh, so I just. Well, it didn't move it. Now it moved it to whatever day it stands in another thing, try and find it. Yeah, for some reason, what's happened that week? Have my Thursday meeting.
That happens to me sometimes. I'll get my weeks messed up.
Like Saturday. No, but the Sunday, no, they said it. Well, we had a grandkids staying with us.
Had an extra mom and grandkids staying with us this weekend because the husband was at a a bachelor party getaway and someone's getting ready and she. Didn't want to be at home alone with the little ones, so she didn't sleep well, so stayed out of our house. Her youngest did with. Another one of our grandchildren.
Jan took around two flights to the. Okay, it was purple. I didn't realize, I knew it was purple, but I didn't realize how much purple's around here.
Yeah, Ryland Blake's son just had his first birthday and he got it yesterday.
Yeah, I think.
K State cap and football jersey, looking at his five year old, you know.
That's what I get. Baby picture with a T-shirt says K State, Brad nineteen question mark, question mark.
Oh, really? Cool. That is cool.
That's on that baby thing I did that last year. I had that. Actually for that, rather than my niece that lives, like I say, you guys cross paths. Hey, Steve, we're back to the week.
Uh, we got, yeah.
We got to see if they came out here Friday. They're both. About see how much things have changed since they've been here. Let's see them have a kids. See them every five years or so.
Knock on wood, those are my flights because I'm not a huge fan fan of flying, but they were really great.
Flight of Manhattan?
They were direct, both direct, so that was super nice.
Yeah. Yeah, I had the flight from hell going out to Virginia, but we're eighteen hours.
Eighteen hours?
Yeah, delay, delay, delay. I'll know for, but yeah, I should have been there at five o'clock at night. I got there at midnight. It was awful. Coming back was directly.
Yeah, I had the same issue.
Oh, it was just.
Got stuck at Detroit, Wayne International in Detroit.
So, yeah, and so we have.
All the water, all the cold water supply was off.
Yeah, you guys.
Couldn't get a soda, couldn't get a drink, couldn't use the bathroom.
The only part of the flight I liked is the refreshments.
Cinnamon crackers or whatever.
Cinnamon crackers, I really liked because look, I mean, they're actually an organic healthy.
They are.
Which surprised me that they put on and they're really good. You could tell them.
It's chocolate, the quinoa in them, we had those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They had pretzels ones and I didn't eat that because we had just bought a healthy pretzel things before we got on the plane, so we ate those with my teas, so that's enjoyable.
Used to do, I like those, I I like those cookies and I used to do ginger ale.
I had me a coffee with it. Tire stand and so that's what I needed.
It actually works out for me. I I usually fly to Manhattan and it's just the short. Dallas, I just jump on the Skytrain, jump over, it usually works out pretty well. I leave early enough in the morning, I'm there right around the noon hour and gives me an extra half a day to do whatever I need to do.
Yeah, I tell you that.
So Bob?
Cindy's trying to run him down.
Omaha and had sit there, so I sat in KC I for five hours, well, into the weather. I thought as soon as I get to the, oh, could we, oh, maybe another hour. Because as soon as I drove home, then they called, they turned around and went back, so that the airport.
Well, I was, I was in Kansas City Airport for about five hours. And um then they said, well, you can go to LaGuardia and go to there. I go, yeah, I'm gonna be stuck in. I can't call it and come get me.
I get our scheduling stuff down.
A sunglasses.
Sorry for the delay.
No worries. You're okay.
Good morning. Uh, Timothy and Patricia Thomas have made application with Riley County Planning and Development requesting to replat lots thirty nine A, thirty nine B. Forty A and forty B of Sam and Rogers subdivision. A single lot. The subject site is generally located approximately five hundred and eighty feet north of Marlet Avenue. On the west side of College Avenue in Manhattan Township. The subject property was originally planted slots thirty nine A, thirty nine B. Forty nine A and forty uh forty B of Sam and Rogers subdivision in December of nineteen fifty seven. And is assessed in its entirety as a single parcel. The site is developed with a single family dwelling built circa nineteen sixty one. Applicant wishes to construct an accessory structure, however, the Riley County Land Development Regulations. Acquire that the accessory structures be built on the same lot or tract occupied by the principal structure. Essentially, the replat allows for that not to occur, but the replat will fix that situation. There's not a request or requirement to rezone the property at this time. Property was zoned to its current designation during the nineteen seventy four zoning conversion process. No variances uh conditional uses or special uses associated with the property. Uh, Rata County Fire District number one will continue to serve the site. The Nurse County Fire Station is the Turtle Creek Fire Station. Located at forty one twenty Highway thirteen. Subject site is located within five hundred miles of a fire station, the very good ISO rating of five. Uh, this is the final plat illustrating the orientation and location of the new lots. Uh, this is the final plat illustrating the orientation and location of the new lots, boundary surrounding the four lots included in the replat. Although the lot lines will be vacated. Uh, the, with this action, existing ten foot utilities located between the northern and southern lots shown here in gray will not be vacated with this replat. The lot is served by city water. And an onsite septic system. The replat will increase the size of the newly created lot enough to meet the area requirements of the sanitary code. Okay. So on June twelfth, the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board heard the request. And unanimously approved the final plat of Thomas Edition Unit One. Which is the replat of lots thirty-nine A, thirty-nine B, forty A and forty B of Sam and Rogers subdivision. As it was determined, platinum the room minimum requirements of Riley County Land Development Regulations. And the review factors in subsection twenty-six nine C three D of the Manhattan Development Code. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners acknowledge the approved final plat. Of Tom, Thomas Edition, uh, Unit One, as it was determined. That meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations. And the review factors in subsection twenty-six nine C three D of the Manhattan Development Code. Sorry, I'm late. But that's all I have for this one. It's a very straightforward replat. There's, uh, no extracurriculars with this one. Um, if you have any questions, uh, for me, I'd be glad to field those.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Just kind of cleaning up some of the toys. And treated this one, basically.
Cleaning up the good word over there.
Yeah. Well, I would, um, make a motion to approve Resolution number zero six two three two five. Acknowledging the approved final plat of Thomas Edition Unit One. Replat of lots thirty-nine A, thirty-nine B, forty A and forty B. Of Sam and Rogers subdivision into a single lot. As presented. Do I need to read all of the rest?
No.
Okay.
Wait, what? You're just now telling me that? Aw, man.
No.
Well, I'll second it at least. You don't want to try to be thorough, man, and I didn't have to be, man.
And there you can't, you stand in.
No, I was gonna ask. Man, I have no fun around here. Alright, I'll second. Good moved and reluctantly seconded. To approve resolutions, Resolution zero six two three two five. Acknowledging the approval, approved final plaid of Thomas Edition Unit One. A replay out of lots thirty-nine A, thirty-nine B, forty A and forty B of Sam Rogers subdivision into a single lot. Favor.
I will briefly sign.
And we'll have a map miler out here for you, son.
Thank you, Bob. Hello. I could put guessing, but where it's at on there. Right, yeah, yeah, I didn't. Like that one, it's, it is. Oh. Yeah, big experience.
Do that on your own.
Insert candidate. You do need to make a motion. Coming in and out of, um.
Yeah, point, yeah. I want to always get to. It gets me too. Yeah.
So.
Kind of show up or just show, say.
Right. Well, we gotta raise those for that. Okay.
Um, I thought I was a little.
Should have probably been. Thank you, Bob. Have a good one. Yeah, like two minutes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Greg, how you doing? Not bad, not bad. You're second.
Okay.
Right after Evan.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, exactly. Hey, how are you? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Ready for me?
Not quite there.
Okay.
Go by the computer box. Now we're ready.
Good morning, Evan McMillan, Public Works. I just wanted to give a notice that Riley County will be doing our chip seal starting on. Uh, Monday, July seventh, and they should be completed by Thursday, July twelfth. This will include Charles Little Road, Wharton Manor, uh, Seaco Park Streets, namely Avery, Robinson and Dog Park Road. We will also be doing South Cena Drive and Keats Streets, including Reservation, Blue Spruce Lane and Keats Avenue. So traffic will be carried through throughout the project. We'll have pilot cars or traffic control, so. Should be a pretty quick, quick project. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Good morning.
Morning.
We just have wrapped up our thirty-six annual master gardener organized tour on Saturday. And people might have seen a lot of plants they're thinking they want to put in their gardens, which is a good thing. We're gonna have a program this Saturday, twenty-eighth, at Blueville Nursery, ten AM. Where we talking about the motto of right plant, right place, right practice. So I got a picture here, so you know. See it, but, uh, here. Show and tell, thank you.
Good day.
So. Hydrangea is what's showing in that picture. Now, there's a range of, uh. Easy growing hydrangeas to extremely hard growing hydrangeas. So just saying I want a hydrangea. We need to have some clarification. So there's definitely a, a place for them in our environment, but there's also a lot of dead. Bad places for hydrangeas, so we'll talk about that.
A lot of those.
I would say most of us have the dead or not attractive looking hydrangeas. They do take. A better environment than Kansas typically has, and the picture is showing a downtown kind of controlled microclimate, if you will. So it becomes a little bit more accessible, but we want to talk to people about, uh, the, the challenges and the possibilities that you. Of growing plants here in Riley County and, uh, just make them aware of their. Uh, easability, or if they're going to have to work at it quite a bit, figure out what they want to do. So Saturday, ten AM, Blueville Nursery for about an hour.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Commissioner, Brittany Phillips, at nine thirty-five on opioid funds.
See you later, Evan.
I heard how John's been. John Gallowman. Has anybody heard anything on him?
John's starting back today.
Is he?
Uh huh, he was in the office yesterday. I mean, yesterday, he was in the office Friday.
Yeah, I knew.
He's looking good. Oh, he's not in? Oh, well, I put him to work anyway, because I text him, we had a tree down on one of our neighboring roads, so.
He's up three months, so I.
Him and his wife were in. He says he's doing good, he's stir crazy, tires sitting around, so. He looked good.
Good morning, Commissioners and Phillips Budget and Finance Officer. Um, I did bring extra copies in case you didn't have the one I gave to you a few weeks ago, so I can definitely pass them out. Um, this is really just an update of our opioid funds and how much they're projecting Riley County to get over the next, um, oh, looks like. Eight, thirteen years, looks like, so through twenty thirty-eight. Um, and so it looks like a total of six hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, and this does not include the new Kroger settlement, so this number could increase depending on how that falls, and they're hoping to have those budgets, um. Updated out to us later this summer. But really, this is just kind of an update on what we can use the funds for. Um, you guys have seen a lot of this information before. You do have two, um, requests this year, one from the Health Department and one from Community Corrections. Um, so the Health Department's asking to continue their, um, education, uh. Community health educator that they have, um, and then, uh, Community Corrections is also looking to, um. Continue their drug court program as they no longer have funding for that moving forward. Um, so you do have those. I also listed other items that you could use this for, um, district court. EMS for mat training, and then you could also use it for, um, agencies like Be Able or even Ponte Mmental Health. Um, if it's specific to any opioid use. Any questions on any of this?
I'm not aware of this Kroger settlement.
It's like Dylan's. So, um, they're still working through all that. I had to look it up when she emailed me, because I was like. Okay, Kroger, I know that's Dylan's, but how much are they looking at? And so I, I know it was like in the millions, but I don't know how that kind of falls. As it breaks down, so.
Kroger's actually owned by, by ABC. On the middle.
You go through the hierarchy of things, yeah. Kroger actually owns Baker's, which owns Dylan's, but. Their parent company of ABC and ESPN owns Kroger.
Say that real quick, get real fast.
Know all this stuff.
He was staying inside out of the heat.
Exactly.
Like an encyclopedia in there.
Might not want to go that far. Kroger's national. Sixty stores nationwide.
Oh, really? I hadn't heard that.
No, yeah. Yeah, it's mostly, um, east coast.
I didn't see what it was. I just saw that it wasn't Dylan's here, so.
CVS was closing a bunch of them in Virginia. They had stores that closed.
Walgreens is close.
Yeah, Walgreens.
Walgreens and CVS kind of affiliated?
I don't know.
I think they're, they're the same umbrella, but they're separate companies.
Got you.
Any questions, anything else you would like me to provide on that?
Thanks, Brittany.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, give Amanda Webb at nine fifty. A little bit of rake.
Think of your families in Rutgersville?
Uh, there's some in Culpeper, Fredericksburg and Front Royal.
Okay.
And also Edinburgh, where those two are smaller. Front, Front Royal's right on the edge of the Shenandoah.
Oh, that ridge.
Yeah.
There's Blue Ridge and Shenandoah.
Yeah, they're on the Shenandoah side and, um, yeah.
Yeah, I went to Culpeper several times, through, through Culpeper.
Yeah, such pretty country out there. When we were driving through the wine country and all that, those estates out there, woo. There's some money sitting out there. So there's some money sitting out there in Virginia.
And horses, all horse, horse ranches.
Yeah.
Stables, so.
And also absolutely zero regard for traffic.
Traffic's awful.
Oh, my lord, I've never seen that.
Two ways, highways everywhere is just, oh.
And everybody's in a fury. Man. You could probably apply that to a lot of places, but Virginia just really stuck out to me in that one.
Um, I didn't want to drive there, that's for sure.
And the roads are really narrow too. They're the shoulders, they don't have much.
They don't have any shoulders, yeah.
Speaker regulates.
Roads are laid out. Seventeen seventy or something.
Right, yeah, exactly. Yeah, I didn't probably anticipate for, you know, the giant F three. F three fifty. Buggy road, they paved.
They're good shape, but you know, I didn't see a whole lot of maintenance. They, they could widen, they've got.
Right.
Landings.
A lot of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went up there for a wedding two years ago. It was right, uh, right outside of Fredericksburg, there's a, uh, forgive us. What the river name is. I would probably butcher it if I'd even tried.
What the river name is. I would probably butcher it if I'd even tried to remember it, but it was pretty. Had a bunch of like boulders like in the river itself. Looked really interesting, yeah. Not what you see around here.
I, I guess it's really, I haven't been there in the fall. It's gotta be.
Oh, yeah.
Close to me with the fall colors.
Imagine so.
So many trees.
I know, I went to uh, um, the Smoky Mountains around um, I think it was like November. And the whole place turned yellow and it was like gold and coolest thing ever. Definitely recommend it. I'm sure Diane knows a little bit about that, too.
Colorado's great, too, in the fall.
Yeah, it is.
No, well, DC would never take that off around the wheels. That's subways.
Yes, DC is, it's hard to drive around, yeah. The trains, uh, my daughter will take, she's going to DC this week, stuff, and she takes the train from Culpeper. She grabs the train, goes, rarely on time.
But it's there.
It's about.
Yeah, when I, well, when I went there, I got, I got a ticket. I thought I ordered a ticket, but apparently I ordered it for like the wrong train. And then, so when we got on the train, I mean, they were quick with it, like, oh, no, you don't, you have the wrong one. You need to either pay up or get out. And then there, of course, there's a fee on top of that, too. Like, oh, you gotta buy it on the spot? Well, here's another twenty-five dollars. Okay, I don't have much choice here, do I?
Train's already moving, gonna throw you out the window.
There was some water at least, so. At least it wouldn't be on the way. Catherine, did you say mostly in the DC area or?
No, we were in DC. We were down there. They have a seven acre uh, little farm down. There's no barbers, but you know, there's some houses, you know, that I. Something. I don't know what they are. It's a Commonwealth, so it's. And they were having elections for delegates to the state. It's not representatives and delegates.
Delegates, huh?
They're Commonwealth, Virginia. They have um. It's more judicial than it is policy. We have like either a magistrate or a judge that's the head of it. And that, like counties, they'll run everything, all the fiscal stuff through him. And the policies are made by either districts or precincts, as I said, Kentucky's the same.
Precincts or not, I don't know. I asked my daughter what precincts are used. Yeah, I have no idea. I'll look at my thing.
Friday in, like, in your, not in your car, but.
Yeah, it's about. Use my car.
Just like her facial.
Yeah, a little bit more rural. Kind of gets congested right there. It's kind of.
Like, shoot, I remember just driving from Richmond to D, or Richmond to Fredericksburg, and like that, that highway system is just sanity. It's like six lane highway, I mean, no.
At least on the major highway, like at least to the airport, they've got like express to fly into.
Right, yeah.
They do the same thing in Louisville on the, um, on the sixty-four and the sixty-five there, and it's.
Does it help?
No.
You know, to the lane to cross.
People do how to use them appropriately, but they don't. I mean, you could be in the middle of the day perfectly sunny outside and nobody knows that.
Really?
I said, I don't care how many lanes they follow, it's never more than two lanes. They're, they're always, you know, heavy construction.
Yeah, there's like barely any access off of that one anyway.
Eight hours to try to do Highway sixty-nine there, going all the way down into Miami, Kennedy.
Then they, then they close a lane for mowing.
Yeah.
It was about, real loud, you know, chickens and guineas and turkeys and ducks. Peasants and peacocks.
Ostriches, they do ostriches, too.
They didn't have ostriches there, but. And then they had a whole bunch of eggs, auctioning off eggs, cartons of eggs, and some that were hatching or not. Hatching well, and, and you know, it was going on. And then they had pigs and they had goats and they had. Other kinds of stuff, too. It was just like, well, I'd like to go and see.
Let me guess, you bought some of Rye. No?
We missed the, the ducks. She wanted one. They were actually selling them in the neighborhood. You hold up two or three, is that okay? And then start auctioning how much each, and people come and pick one or two. Interesting auction. They had plants, five plants. They have big cabbages there, so I mean, it's just.
I seem to think about crab cakes and oysters.
Good stuff, man.
I know.
Good stuff.
There was supposedly some truck or something in town that was selling fresh from Maine. I don't know how you can call it fresh from Maine either, but.
I have one. I went to a food truck. They didn't advertise them, I saw, and so I was like, oh. They told me the price, but I was just in such shock, I was just like, here's my cards, I guess. And it wasn't, it was like frozen.
Yeah.
It was just, uh, I was very extraordinarily disappointed.
Had the meeting about moving. Told him that, that had to bring the microwave.
Yeah, what are you gonna do for coffee?
I thought you were having Starbucks on the way in.
I'm not the one making us move. No, I'm not. I didn't want to move. I wanted to stay put. Everybody else made me move.
Nobody was. So who's in charge of our move?
Really, I mean, facilities, uh, public works, but Cory's been doing a lot. Been doing an awful lot of it, and that's why I had meetings. There's a lot of different things going on that weren't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where, who's in charge of where we go and how we get there?
Well, that's what they've got it. Did a test run on this new system down earlier last week.
Wait, Amanda.
Alrighty. Good morning, Commissioners. Amanda Webb, Planning Director, here with our monthly comprehensive plan update, um, progress report. Um, so you'll hear a lot more from me today at the Intergovernmental Luncheon, so I know we love to talk about comp plan all the time. Um, so I'll keep it a little light here. Of course, happy to answer any questions or if there's anything specific you want to talk about here, but since I'll be talking more about it then. Um, we'll, we'll just kind of hit some of the highlights of this this morning, so. Um, subcommittees, they are still um, working on their draft goals. Um, each of the groups are kind of in different. You know, different phases of their, of their work, if you will. Um, so overall, the intention, once we kind of finalize the draft goals. Those will be released. We'll have conversations with you folks. Those will be released publicly for, um, you know, folks to review and make comment on and whatnot. Um, so hopefully that's going to happen here shortly. It's taken a little bit longer than kind of anticipated, just, you know, getting people together. And, you know, getting comments or whatnot. And we just want to make sure, you know, people are, are, we don't want to rush it, you know, as, as we've talked a lot about. Um, we want to try to stay to schedule, but we don't want to rush it too much. You know, we, we want these folks to, you know, do what, what they're there to do, so. Let's see, so the Ag Land Use Committee will meet this week, um, to hopefully finalize what Stan Tech prepared for them. The Housing Group will meet on Monday, um, a week from today, to um, hopefully finalize what Stan Tech had prepared. Um, Health and Parks had made some good progress kind of on their own, um, so they're just kind of working to finalize their parts. Um, and we'll have that kind of one last meeting with that. Um, Economic Development. Um, as we talked about, um, Stan Tech did provide draft goals that I gave to that Subcommittee as well as Redab, the Rural Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, both um, groups are looking those over and providing comments, I mean, again, to those um, draft goals that Stan Tech provided. We had more conversation with Redab during their meeting last Wednesday. Um, I've gotten some comments in from members of the Subcommittee. So it's just, it's just taking a little bit of time. Of course, as you folks know, economic development is a completely new um, chapter, a new. Um, uh, topic, if you will, in our comprehensive plan. We don't really have much of anything in our current plan now. So that's one of our chapters that will be completely new. So it'll be completely done from scratch, so we want to make sure. Of course, we want to make sure we get all of it right, but everything else pretty much has, a lot of the other topics, if you will. We have current things in there to kind of build from and kind of, you know, use as a background as we up. Date, economic development is again, brand new. So to that end, um, I am thinking in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to bring the draft goals to you folks. To take a look at. Um, I, I would like to do that with all of them, but I'm thinking economic development, I want to do that earlier than later. Um, because again, it is a brand new um, chapter, a brand new consideration we're making in our plan. I want to make sure you folks are comfortable. Um, you know, with, with what's being put in there. Um, and you know, some of the considerations we'll have to make based on what we would include. As our goals for this, again, long range plan. So we'll talk more about that, but expect to see that in the next, I'm looking probably later next week. Um, I know that's quick, but again, we do want to keep things moving along, but I was just thinking that it would probably be a good plan for you folks to see that. Section at the very least sooner than later, so we can really kind of, you know, kind of make sure things are, are kind of flowing how you're thinking, so. Um, and as I mentioned, once, um, we have, you know, settled on draft goal language for each of the groups. It'll be put out there um, onto the website and announced and everything, so people know it's there. They can take a look, they can give us comments. Um, and so we'll be working on some of that still for the next several months, so. So that's kind of where we are with our draft goals. Any questions on that piece? Um, stakeholder status, um, this is also ongoing and we've made some more um, progress over the last few weeks. We have now took, uh, spoken to all of the small cities. We're really, really glad for that. Adam, our Stan Tech consultant, was able to attend Randolph's last um, city council meeting, um, and talk to them about that. Um, they felt comfortable leaving their designated growth area as it currently is shown in our Vision twenty twenty-five. Um, and several of them have already been on my um, notification list, so they're, you know, made aware of when things are happening or when information's out there. Meetings are happening, et cetera, so um, he was able to provide them a little bit more information, get some direct input. Um, it sounds like they didn't have a whole, they were excited for the process, um, you know, glad to be, you know, included. Um, but they didn't necessarily have a whole lot of, again, no changes to their, their growth area, um, and not a whole lot, um, necessarily at this point, but. Um, at least we were able to get up there and talk to them, so we have communicated with, and, and are, of course, still in communication, but at least have had those direct. Conversations with each of the small cities. Um, so that, we're, we're very glad for that. So, um, again, talked to all the um, school districts and a variety of other folks. We have um, connected with folks from Fort Riley and N B A F. Um, they've been given their sets of um, questions and that they're working on, and then we'll have meetings with um, with folks from Stan Tech. To have those stakeholder interviews. And then we've also reached back out to um, folks from Kansas State University. Um, we had, we, of course, had been working to um, communicate with somebody over there and, and we've got um, got that. We're working to get um, that interview set, but at least we were able to kind of reconnect with those folks over there, so. Um, and again, several other people on the list, um, you know, we have been able to talk to or at least send the questions to. Um, so while we're relatively still trying to kind of wrap up the stakeholder, it's still, you know, we're still happy to take any input. People want to share with us until the very end, so, um, again, I, I know so much of this stuff I'm broken record on, but you know, it's, it's. Communities plan, communities input. We want to know what people think, good and bad. We, we want, we want their input, so. Um, let's see, some talk here. So again, um, just to kind of reiterate, we did talk to each of the small cities about their designated growth areas. They all will, um, those areas around, again, just the small cities ones we're talking about, will remain the same um, for the plan going forward. Input we receive from each of the small cities. Um, Manhattan's, of course, we're not touching that. That's um, you know, defined as part of their. Um, their urban area, and then as well as their comprehensive plan boundary, all of that's going to remain the same. We'll just fortify that in our plan. And then we're looking at other um, areas that we might be able to expand our designated growth areas in, so. Um, let's see, and then the other thing I want to make sure to mention, and I'm going to be mentioning it a lot, um, of course. Is our next community workshop. So of course, as soon as I turn this in, I think I turned it in Tuesday morning, and then Tuesday afternoon, we had our. Date and location set for our community workshop, so that's why it's not reflected in your report, but I do want to say, um, August fifth, six to eight P M. Leonardville Sykes Venue, we will have our next um, comprehensive plan update community workshop. Um, so again, I'll say that here. You'll hear me say it again at Intergovernmental. You'll hear me say it lots and lots and lots. And um, I'll be, you know, we'll have it on our website. I'll send it out to my mailing list. I have about three hundred and fifty uh, email addresses that I send that information out. And then we'll just ask folks to basically help me spread the word. Um, again, I'd love to, you know, put a, put a notification flyer in every single person's mailbox. But unfortunately, we can't do that every time, so we'll just have to ask people to help me uh, let folks know about it. So we can get as many people out there as possible. Um, this is the next, um, this is number two. We should, we'll have a third one sometime in the fall. Um, these are actual, again, community workshops where we're out there, we're giving information, we're having activities, we're getting people to interact and give us information. But this is still not the only opportunity for people to give us public input. You can still email me, you can access the website, you can come visit me, you can call me. Um, of course, you know, I'm always giving updates to you folks and our planning boards, um, and any, anytime. I can, I, you know, I talk about the process and make sure people are aware of it, send out updates to, again, our email list and whatnot. I just really, really want to make sure people know how to get involved, what we're doing, what this is about. Um, the different, you know, ways we'll be out in the community and how they can talk to us, so. Um, so I think that's all I have for now, again, because we'll talk more today at lunch. Um, do you have any questions or anything you want to talk more about right now? Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner, I'll pick up hands on at ten ten.
Next, Commissioner Jacob Hansen at ten ten.
Ready, Commissioners?
Yeah, we do, I think we'll go first.
Yeah, okay. We go ahead and make a motion. That we recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of County Health.
I would second that.
And we've been seconded to recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Board of Health, all in favor?
Aye.
Good morning Commissioners, Diane Creek, Health Department, um, with Kalen Speth, the supervisor for WIC. Uh, we're here to present a letter that we want to send to the KDHE office. We received notification that uh, they are cutting all WIC programs in the state. And so, um, our cut is going to make a huge um, impact on our WIC department. Um, what we're gonna, we're gonna have a fall of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. The rest of this fiscal year that ends on September thirtieth. And um, there's just really, I mean, it's going to be really hard to make that up with such a short period of time. Um, plus, uh, Gary County has lost their WIC contract for next year for twenty twenty-six. Which starts October first, and so they are in the process of. Finding, referring their clients out, and so. You know, they, because WIC can go anywhere, they, people can go anywhere and get WIC, but it needs to be, you know, fairly convenient. Uh, depending on where people live, so we've already uh, got, how many?
About seven families transferred last week.
Yeah, and that was just the first week that that we knew about this, so. Uh, we expect, rightly, or Gary County has five hundred and eighty-eight. People who are in their program, uh, so we could potentially get the bulk of those. Um, they have Gary County Conza WIC program, but they have some staffing issues. Um, so they're going to take as many as they can, but you know, there's going to be some of those people that are going to have to come over here.
Um, are they coming over here or they coming to IAD?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're also going to go to Fort Riley, you know, if they're, if they're military people, they're welcome to go to Fort Riley. Um, but bottom line, we're going to have to serve them, so. Um, so yeah, so we're wanting to send this letter to KDHE and because they didn't figure our. Cut right in the first place, um, they didn't use a timeframe that in. Included um, some additional health insurance from new staff, they didn't include.
Just full staffing.
Yeah, it's all staffing stuff, so. Um, so we want to send this to them and see if they will look at that math a little bit closer and. And um, change our allocation, change our. Our uh, cut, so, yes.
Well, do they actually have the money at the state in their car, are they, is this coming down from Washington?
You know.
I don't know that I can.
Yeah, I don't know for sure either, except for they sent out an email that said that. How it's going to affect them as well at KDHE, and basically, they're going to lose some training.
I think we were on that call with them a month or so ago, they said it was like two-thirds federal and then. Legislature gave them the other third or something like that, and there was even cuts to that, so. Um, yeah, kind of both.
Well, are they cutting their services, like staff or anything at the state level?
I didn't read that they were cutting any staff, I just, yeah, I just read that they were cutting some train.
Programs.
Yeah, just training for their staffs.
And this is the funds that just come from our, for our staff and our staffing and our work. Are they cutting the amount that we have to give out, is that?
Uh-uh, no, yeah.
Okay, that's, I wasn't clear.
Yeah.
So not cutting the amount given out, but just not giving, having enough people to.
To give it out. Exactly, and there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of things that staff have to do.
Oh, yeah.
And so, you know, the more. Clients that you put on our staff, the less quality services, and right now, it's a, it's a great. Program and it's, it's really high quality, so, um, yeah.
Worth a shot, hmm, worth a shot, oh, yeah.
It is worth a try.
We need more than one copy?
Oh, we should be fine.
Okay.
We should be fine.
So we'll see if it can do any good to send that letter. It won't hurt.
We're going to try.
Yeah.
You know, motion that, or?
Motion or letter.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that's uh, we signed the letter addressed to um, Kansas Department of Health. And human services uh, for um, uh, Riley County WIC.
I would second that.
Illegally seconded to approve signing the letter to um, KDHE regarding the shortfall of WIC. All in favor?
Aye.
All three please sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, since you need to sign it, can I have you both sign it, that way Cindy can take copies and she'll get you the original, since your signature lines are on there? Thank you. Going back and forth multiple times.
Well, I would make up to adjourn this, the um, Board of Riley County Health and reconvene as the Board of Riley County Commissioners.
Second.
Illegally seconded to recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the County Board of Commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and Cindy will get that too, so she can process everything. Okay.
Good morning Commissioners, Jacob Manson, interim county councillor here uh, for our administrative work session. Have a fun topic uh, for us to go over today, and that would be the concept of a countywide noise. Resolution or abatement. Um, Riley County currently does not have, at least from my review, any sort of resolution uh, requiring the abatement of noises. Or anything of that nature, and so what I've shared with you guys there is just a couple of examples that I found, one. From uh, Douglas County and then one from Atchison, one is a much more simpler approach, while the other one goes through a little bit more. Uh, definitions, provides for certain examples regarding agricultural, uh, you know, machines and things of that nature. Um, kind of while, while reviewing, you know, noise. Resolutions or noise abatement um, resolutions is, you know, kind of maybe why we haven't gone there in the past. And one of the reasons I could think of uh, is that. Noise abatement, noise nuisances, uh, you can, you can go after these as a civil matter, you know, as an individual. Doesn't have to be the county that steps in for the individual to stop the bait and nuisances. Uh, that is something that can be done and can be brought by an individual against another individual uh, in court. Um, and I have to wonder maybe previous commissions, if they've ever talked about this before. Uh, that's kind of where they, they landed was that, well, this is more or less a matter between individuals and not. Something the county is necessarily interested in getting involved. Um, and that's just kind of conjecture on my part, I don't know if Rich has any uh, experience in having a discussion with previous boards. I would talk to Amanda on this one.
But it's come up before with venues such as Stampede, because there was a push at one time to do something like that at Fairmont Park. And so, decade, couple decades ago, there was a conversation, and you might check with Amanda any work or policy or something. I don't know, because they even talked about, it's an issue we dealt with firing range. I remember we went out to check desks at the firing range, but then also regarding outdoor venues, so you may check. Because we all have also had outdoor venues at Brits, and so I know they've dealt with it at some level.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we've dealt with that because we. During COVID, um, because we moved. We moved some venues outside over there to that location because they couldn't, they couldn't properly do them indoors. And we had that discussion and I don't remember it ever going anywhere. Because there were several venues down in Aggieville that because of. Um, social distancing, because of public um, gathering requirements, they couldn't do concerts indoor, so they tried to. They couldn't do concerts indoor, so they tried to choose an outdoor location where it was less restricted. I believe this conversation came up, but I don't think we.
That makes sense, I, I know that.
Go anywhere.
The city has a noise ordinance.
Yeah.
So, anything within city limits, you know, they can control that.
Well, in fact, I know we did, because there were several of the neighbors in the area that were complaining about that. I remember that very clearly, that was in probably October of two thousand and twenty.
Well, just to give you a little bit of background to the basis of why I'm bringing this to you guys, uh, we had a, a citizen come and, and. You know, make a complaint to our office that, you know, we wish that the county could get involved and do something about this. You know, regarding some, you know, uh, improvement district areas that we have around the county. Um, and, you know, they're, they're looking to us, I guess, to, to do something about it. And so, I thought I would just bring this to your guys' attention. Here's, there's a couple examples, you know, maybe something for you guys to think about. Um, obviously, no decisions need to be made anytime soon, or I'm not necessarily even asking. Just bringing it to your attention as a citizen came up and talked to me about it.
No, I guess my question in return becomes, as it does with all these things, how, how is it enforced?
Right, and so.
What are enforcement measures on this?
It would just be, you would need to get an injunction uh, through district court, so you'd still have to go through the district court process. And use the, the county's code enforcement um, statutes that we have. Go down the prosecution route, just like we do for other nuisance abatements, such as what we're doing, you know, on certain properties when they're storing a bunch of junk. It, it would follow the same process. And so, perhaps it would have the same pitfalls. You know, that it would have in other cases.
So you're saying this would actually fall under nuisance abatement?
Yeah, this would be nuisance abatement.
So we have to have this to control the, to make sure it's under nuisance abatement?
To make sure, well, we're setting guidelines at, at least as far as noise. Noise, nuis, nuisances particularly to noise. Is usually when we, when we go for nuisance violations, where we have specific regulations within our land development regulations that we point to say. Hey, you can't have a junkyard here, this is a nuisance, this is a nuisance, this is, and you're violating these. And so what we don't have is a specific regulation we can point to to say, you're violating this regulation.
And just, a neighbor in University Park's been blasting loud volumes of noise, of a song. So that you can hear it from a great distance.
You'll figure.
Maybe you answered this, Jacob, I just didn't understand it, but say we have the regulation. Is it gonna be a situation like short-term rentals where there's no law to allow us to take it to court to really do anything about it? Or is there something such as our current nuisance abatement law as far as junk, to where we could do something about it?
Well, we so, the answer is a little bit more complicated and not so straightforward, and that's because. You have, the way the, the law that we got recently in place works is it's, it's geared towards, uh, specific nuisance abatement. And that doesn't actually, that doesn't, it's supplemental to the regulations we have in place, it's not standalone, that law, right? So, we could, we could, and that, and what that law does is allow the board to make an order. To uh, go ahead and abate the nuisance and then assess the cost against property, can't really do that with, with noises, I guess. May, I mean, maybe there's an argument if they, they got a loud machine, I, I. We run into a lot of problems, I think, in trying to, to apply that bill to this situation.
I didn't think it fit, so that's my question, is there any bill or law that allows them to really do something about it?
Yeah, and there, and there is, so there's still in the statutes, the nineteen um, fifty-seven, somewhere around there. That gives us a, an code enforcement procedure which governs it. Um, and we can get an injunction uh, against people, which basically is of course the court saying, stop. Or you'll find you in contempt. Uh, but again, I think if we go that route, we might have the same problems that we've had previously with. You know, before we had that bill, we'd go ahead and go through this process, we'd get an injunction, or we'd get a court order, and then. If that gets violated, then what, you know?
Greg, if I could, and you said code enforcement, so we're, we're not a county that has building codes.
Right, it's, it's just regulation enforcement, that's what we do with our land development regulations, is we prosecute under that specific statute.
That was kinda one of my questions to Mr. Cobra Lee's about the windows, is how do we enforce that when we're not a code county?
Yeah.
Egress windows.
Well, and it, it says code enforcement in the statute, but that just applies to our regulation.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure.
One with exceptions, I do think we need, you know, they got pretty like this, but also we need to plug Fort Riley.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. Might, yeah, might have some, some issue.
Yeah, good luck with that one.
Well, that's why we probably go.
Well, if you've got one other one, if you wanna talk about federal too, and that's the airport.
Yeah, if we wanna do something, um, you know, I would, I would recommend we probably go the exception route. And we obviously accept out any, anything created by Fort Riley or the.
Well, I think.
The Manhattan uh, airport.
Noise used zones that we have already trumped what we got. They have more and bigger guns than we do.
Or we have a whole different problem to deal with.
So, there's.
That was a reason for those no, noise zones put in place decades ago.
Yeah, and that makes sense, and one thing, you know, uh, this is pretty short term, so one of the, one of the things. As I would do in my review of this, probably reach out to Douglas County specifically and ask them if they've enforced this. How it's worked in the past, what have you guys done, anything?
Probably wise to get case study on any of them in the, in the state of Kansas that's been tried to be enforced and see. How well or how not well.
Yeah.
Has worked out.
And if you got, and then, and I guess really.
You're gonna spend a lot of resources on this at some particular point in time, we gotta know that there's.
Right.
Teeth involved and that the courts actually side with it if you do put something together.
And at this point, that, is this something you guys want my office to go ahead and, and pursue? Or is this something maybe you guys wanna take a look at yourself a little bit, get back to my office? And, and, and see if that's something that's a good use of county resources.
Oh, I'd say, I think if you can see if there's any success at enforcing it.
Okay.
Before we go too far.
Yeah, alright, I can absolutely do that.
But if I, we do have any exception. Yeah, let's say, can't enforce it, then.
Yeah, what, what are we doing?
We're gonna have the same conversations we've had this morning on that and other things.
Yep, yep, that's fair. Alright, well, I will certainly go and, and see what, see how that's gone and specifically Douglas, because I think I like the way theirs is, is phrased. The, the better out of what I've seen so far, but. Go from there, but um, aside from that, uh, another topic, of course, is we have our tax sale Friday. Um, so, everything's been going uh, smoothly on that, knock on wood, bitter registration closed on Friday last week. Um, and so we have basically the group of folks who will be allowed to participate. I'm not sure what the number is, I'd have to ask Jana, I think it's pretty consistent with how many we've had previously, and I think that's around the seventy to ninety. Individuals are usually signed up for that.
How many, how many properties, how many pieces we have this month?
I had those numbers and I don't, I don't have them in front of me now, I wanna say it's somewhere between sixty to seventy. I know we have only like a couple homes, we have one that's a rental home, uh, and there's people living in it, the renters. But we can't get ahold of the landowner, and it's going to the tax sale, uh, which is really unfortunate. They have until Thursday to pay up, that they pay all their taxes by Thursday.
Uh, what's the lease on the, on the property?
What do you mean?
What's it leased out to?
Oh, I, it's just individual.
Well, they send their rent.
I, I'm kidding. I, I have no idea, I don't have the, their lease agreement or anything of that nature.
Regardless, whoever buys it, they have to honor that lease.
Should, anyways, depends on.
That's the law. I know that one.
Well, I mean, they can always just do a term name, thirty days, and then that's that.
What time does the ta, sales start?
Uh, ten p.m., or ten p.m., ten a.m.
Ten a.m. where the public works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be jam-packed.
Yeah, it usually is, so.
No fun to go to.
Yeah, and RCPD will be doing most of, of course, the actual auction itself. I'll get up and give a quick presentation of just kinda expectations. And then they'll conduct it, and everything should run as smoothly as it does every year, so I hope.
This is your first one?
This'll be my first one, yeah, first of many, hopefully. So, just wanted to update you guys on that, and I don't believe I have anything else unless you guys have any further questions for me.
Time for Megan, pressure it.
Good morning Commissioners. Happy Monday. Megan Lewis, Director of Community Corrections, I'm here to give my staff update. And I haven't seen you in a little while, because I didn't get to see you in the month of May due to the Memorial Day holiday. So, starting with juvenile intake, let's see if we can get this a little bit better here. I don't know.
Yeah, it's a play with the bars.
Right down here. You put it all there, that's a little better, so starting with juvenile intake and assessment. May, we had fourteen intakes, seven of those were returned to a parent or guardian, one was placed with a family or friend, a relative. And then three went to an emergency shelter, two went to DCF or foster care, and then one was placed in detention. And we have two new juvenile intake and assessment officers that are in training right now. And they have completed their, their office training, and now we're trying to get them opportunities out in the field to do shadowing. Our youth core intermediate intervention, immediate intervention program currently has thirty-two participants here in Riley County. Ten are required jurors, thirty-seven are volunteer jurors, and then three have been referred for the MDT referrals. Meaning that they have not been a hundred percent in compliance, so we're trying to get their behaviors, and we have nobody in Clay County right now. For juvenile intensive supervision, he currently has five that are in the community out on intensive supervision. And then four in the correctional facility in Tefica, one is out on conditional release. And then we have a courtesy supervision case out to another district, and then a interstate compact juvenile that has been sent out to another state. So we have a total of twelve there. And for our adult services, we have a hundred and two from May that have been on um, intensive supervision. That's really consistent, the last three months have stayed pretty much the same, we have a total of a hundred and ten. So, um, we have a few that have been in, in treatment, and then some that have went to jail, and then we do have thirty upscanders, so that has consistently went down. Um, from month to month there. Our adult recovery court program, we have sixteen current participants, fourteen of those are Riley County clients, and then two are for Clay County. We've had a total of fifty-eight participants since the start of the program, eighteen have graduated from Riley County and seven from Clay County. And then we've had seventeen that have been removed or revoked or left the program for various reasons. We do plan another recovery court graduation coming up in July, it hasn't been set yet for the exact date. And some really good news is, we have been granted our extension, um, it was approved on June tenth for our BGA grant. So we will be able to re, use the remaining funds for that, that will carry us through the rest of two thousand and twenty-five. So we were pretty excited about that news, and then I did meet with the Manhattan City Manager on June twelfth. To discuss the option to potentially apply for the opioid funds that the city of Manhattan gets. And now we're scheduled for another meeting on July seventh, she has some more questions, and she scheduled a meeting to meet with um, Major Mark French and myself. As well as her, her team over there, so we're gonna discuss a little bit more and hopefully make some progress. I, I will say that the application for those funds is gonna go through the special alcohol grant process. So it's not, it's not open or eligible right now, that should happen in August, and then we should find out sometime, I think in late September, if we, we get those funds. And then we were also awarded the Daniel Keating Foundation Grant in the amount of six thousand dollars. If you remember, we use those funds to help support our protective homes, we provide the trainings to the protective homes, a stipend if they take a kiddo in. As well as um, we purchase gift cards so that they can go out and they can buy like clothing if they needed, or shoes. Um, hygiene stuff, different things like that to support those kiddos while they're in their home. We completed the Casey just audit on June fifth in collaboration with Court Services, um, the County Attorney's Office and IT. And we're waiting for the results of that, but overall, I think it went really well. And that is all I have for my staff update, Jessie is going to be presenting about Daniel Keating real quick.
Good morning, Jessie Hubbard, I'm an assistant for Riley County Community Corrections. I think Megan took care of my first one, the Daniel Keating Foundation Grant Award. Um, we did apply for uh, another round of funding in April and was received toward last month that we were awarded six thousand dollars. So the first thing that I have before you here is just the uh, accepting the uh, six thousand dollars that we were awarded.
Make a motion to approve Riley County Community Corrections to accept the two thousand and twenty-five Daniel Keating Foundation Award.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve Riley County Commission Corrections, accept the two thousand and twenty-five Daniel Keating Foundation Award, all in favor.
Thank you, and then uh, the last thing I have before you is, uh, we needed to discuss uh. Needed for permission to reallocate some money in our fourth quarter of the KDOC budget cycle. Um, as a result of the position left vacant in Clay County and trouble finding the right candidate. As well as hiring at a lower rate than the previous ISO that held that position, we have remaining funds in both our adult and juvenile services. We would like permission to reallocate these funds to purchase a vehicle, miscellaneous equipment, and to make security and office upgrades. All purchases do need to be made by June thirtieth, therefore, we would return at a later meeting with an itemized list of the adjustments. But we're asking for permission before we make the purchases. An estimate for the amounts that we need reapportioned are forty thousand dollars for adult services and thirty thousand dollars for juvenile services.
It sounds okay to me. I, I would make a motion to approve the reallocation of adult and juvenile services personnel funds to vehicle, office, and equipment purchases.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve rail, reallocation of adult and juvenile services personnel funds. To vehicle, office, and equipment purchases, all favor.
Aye.
Thank you Commissioners.
Do, what am I, it's ten forty-five? Long day today with that.
Good one, I'll be, I'll be getting my teeth cleaned, so I'd much rather be there.
It doesn't take too long.
No, yeah, I haven't done it in a while, so it has to be a deep clean, so it's gonna be rough. Half, half my face numbed out.
Just for teeth cleaning?
Yeah.
Then they're gonna numb your face.
Uh, yeah, yeah, they numb, yeah.
I never let him do it, he cleans.
I said, it's a, it's a deep cleaning.
Difference between a deep cleaning and a cleaning.
They'll, they'll push up under your gums. So they'll numb it, that way they've got a tool that'll actually slide up and almost kinda go up under your gums and scrape down.
Sound like fun.
I've never heard of that one.
It's gets rid of gingivitis and all those other germs that get up underneath there.
My face is just coming to, I had to go get my, I had to go get a filling refilled this morning, so I don't know, it's kind of getting this, getting the sensation back.
It's weird, Billy.
Yeah, it's weird, yeah.
I don't like that. I'd rather just deal with the pain up front.
Not like shots to pound.
Yeah, I was like.
Work fast, but.
When I had, I had my wisdom teeth taken out, that's how they had to do it, like I didn't get put under or anything, they just did shots and. Still remember that noise.
We did a topical and I think it took a bao in or something, you know, took my wisdom teeth out, I was still half-conscious.
Yeah.
They gave me some kind of a lull eye, bro.
Yeah, me too, and I don't remember what it was, it's been like twenty something years.
I was really young when I had.
And I had blast cavity filled, though I did it without the overcame. But I think it hurt with clamp.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda dry and clean, that was like. Cap itself wasn't, wasn't a problem.
The old teeth maintenance.
I'm dumb.
Get some time here too, keep putting it off.
You can, you can step that off. You can step that off.
We had a wild inning to the, uh, baseball national championship yesterday.
Oh, did they?
LSU took it, uh.
Took it in two?
Yeah, took it in two, but, uh, they, uh, ejected the coach from Coastal Carolina and the first base coach in the first inning yesterday.
What did they do?
Nothing, really.
Didn't know that it did much. It was like, hey, they, yeah, he was talking about balls and strikes or something.
Yeah, he was just arguing that, he was arguing the count process on it and umpire just tossed him and then first baseman looked like the, the ump on the third baseline there just like kinda tripped and fell over into him and said that he basically knocked him down.
And threw up two fingers too, which means that a two-game ban or suspension, I mean.
You get the regular suspension of, of, yeah, of the one game for the assistant and then two games on top of it starting next year.
It was two umpires colliding.
They watched the ending of the first game, the last half. Did you get what yesterday?
LSU just had the better athletes is what it really was and, but it didn't have to, it didn't have to end like that.
What was the score yesterday?
Five-three maybe?
I think it was five-two, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
One-zero. I thought about it right about the end of the game at my grand's birthday party.
We had that one in game seven of the NBA Finals last night.
Yeah, that was wrong. I can't believe how it.
I felt so bad.
I'm a Thunder fan, so it was like, hmm, but still, you don't wanna win like that.
I'm not an Iowa State fan, but I still felt bad. He tore his Achilles in the second quarter. Slipped and just.
I mean, it, and he said, and I started talking about it on the replay. You could see it.
Oh, yeah, it rubber banded and straightened.
He just knew immediately by the look on his face and his reaction.
It's like honestly on TV, I was like, just stop replaying it. We've seen it enough. Like, I don't wanna watch it anymore.
Once was painful enough.
Yeah, ugh, gosh.
Alright, um, morning, commission. Uh, Court Mayor Meyer here. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm here to, uh, represent John Ellerman from Public Works, uh, and a request, uh, in regards to the elevator modernization project. So, now that we've moved this project forward and we're understanding more in depth on the amount of time it's gonna take for each elevator to be upgraded and modernized, we're learning that it can be, uh, around a three-week process. And, uh, so when we met to go over, uh, installation, talk about scheduling, talk about timing, they presented us with an option of, um, where they use a term called ninja or an accelerated process. But anyway, that process, uh, they would work longer days. They would work over a weekend and they would get an elevator done in a nine to ten, ten-day window. Um, when we talked with courts about how long it would take, they looked at their court schedule, which is very well scheduled out. They could not find places or gaps in there like that, which is completely understandable, but they were able to find a week in there. And, uh, and so, um, we communicated that back to TKE and went through a process talking with them about if they could get it done in this September nineteenth to the twenty-eighth. They said that they could and that that process, uh, instead of being three to four weeks, it would knock it down to the ten days. And, uh, what we're essentially paying is overtime. We're not paying an additional, uh, fee during their regular working. We're just paying an overtime for the longer days and the weekends. And they presented us with an option of twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars uh, on top of the existing, uh, signed agreement. And that they would get the courthouse. This is just the courthouse elevator, that, that one of the three. But they would be able to get it done in between the nineteenth and the twenty-eighth, which is a gap that courts has where they do not have a major court case going on. Doesn't mean courts will stop or be closed or nothing like that. I don't want anybody to think that. Uh, business will go on. Obviously, during this time, the elevator is completely unavailable. Um, the original project, uh, CIP approval was six hundred and five thousand. The contract that was signed was five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, so, uh, this, this, uh, additional twenty-two thousand, two hundred would fit or does fit in the, uh, in the original approved, approved amount. And, uh, so talking with John and Jerry and so forth, uh, I said I'd come forward and present and ask that you approve this option to move this forward, uh, so we can get this scheduled. Uh, it works out well for courts. Uh, the other two, uh, elevators would be done ahead of this one. So, we would work off of this September nineteenth to twenty-eighth date. And they would work, uh, and get Carnegie, uh, done ahead of time, uh, before this one. And then the health department would actually be first. And so, they would be starting in, uh, August, uh, at the health department and move to Carnegie, get it done ahead of the September nineteenth date, and then move over and get, uh, uh, and get the courthouse done.
The health department's just the FCRC building, correct?
Uh, it's the main.
The admin building?
Admin building, yes.
We were talking about that the other day.
Yeah, the admin building. That's a shorter one, uh, because of what's already there. It's also, uh, the elevator equipment or the, the motor and all those things is, is newer already, so it's not as much of an upgrade or take as long as it will with the other two buildings over here. Um, so, uh, we are, uh, we're asking your permission or your approval to, uh, to move forward with this agreement. And then we can, uh, get schedules and everything locked in and get, get this project underway.
Are they sure that they're going to be able to do it in that timeframe?
Yes.
Barring any unforeseen.
Yes, so, uh, we should be expecting the, uh, ship dates for all of the equipment, uh, this week. And so, uh, where this fits in gives plenty of time for everything to, to get shipped. Uh, we're actually in discussions about that it would be shipped early to us. Uh, things is even as much as we, we may have to put a, uh, a site box or a container. These are some of the conversations that are going on, cause they're telling us that these pallets will be, uh, uh, twenty feet long and four feet tall and three feet wide that are gonna come with all the equipment and things in it. Um, so, we need to get this, if you're okay, and if you approve, locked in, and then we'll move forward with the next pieces and decisions that have to happen so that everything can get here, be onsite, be ready to go. That way, there's no delays in getting this done in that timeframe.
I'm glad they were able to work something out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be a tough one, yeah. Uh, Courts has got a, a month-long trial going on in August.
Yeah.
And, uh, and so that was where we really had to find the gap. And we found one, thanks to Kathy and the judges over there.
And it may actually be longer with deliberation.
We, yeah, we, we did not want theirs to be at the beginning of September, and so this is down there, so.
I would make a motion to Allah Public Works to proceed with the additional cost for the accelerated install of the courthouse elevator for twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars from TK Elevator Corporation.
One second. Been moved and seconded, proceed with the additional costs for accelerated install of the courthouse elevator twenty-two thousand, two hundred dollars from TK Elevator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the signature page, they put John's name on there, as you'll see. I know.
He's right behind you.
I was, never mind. I was gonna ask if I need to have a name change on it, but you can, so, okay. Alright, thank you, commission.
Thanks, Cory.
You bet.
It's what a good friend does, right?
Alvin, go ahead.
Alvin, they'll take you early.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you.
Alvin Perez, Operations Manager for Pub- Public Works, uh, here to request approval to fill a position, um, operator one or two in the asphalt division. We have a resignation from one of our crew members on the asphalt crews, so we're just asking permission to go ahead and fill, refill that. It's already a budgeted. It'd just be a new guy filling that position, so.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the Public Works Department advertised to hire for the Public Works operator position.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve Public Works Department advertised for hiring for the Public Works operator position. All in favor?
Commissioners, thanks, Alvin.
Welcome back, John.
Hopefully, he's a lefty if he signs on.
Well, it looks like it's signed left-handed anyway.
Your busy afternoon, commissioners.
Yep, like I said, I don't know if you guys wanna meet sometime.
Two o'clock?
The FCRC and.
FCRC, where at?
At the front end.
At the front end, front entrance.
East entrance.
East entrance, okay.
Is where we're going, is at the other end. Gotta show you what, what they've got planned for us.
So, we might need to kinda make an adjustment to the agenda. You're counselled, but that constitutes an open meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
Not on the agenda.
If you guys, though, if you guys are there and you're talking about any sort of county business, I mean, you guys know that, that's true. But if you're sitting there listening and you're not partaking, I, I don't know if we wanna dance that line.
Yeah, that's an open meeting, obviously, if you're meeting two.
Okay.
With one, two or more.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it depends on the content, but, yeah.
Let's just wait till two-thirty. We'll find a time during that. Both will be there.
You can do it at two. You just need to, you're basically mending the.
Yeah, and you can, and you can.
Discussing any policy, just showing the mechanics of how. But I'm just saying, it is.
If anybody can join us if they want.
And I just saw you were just reading changes on Comine for this morning, so it's very.
Yeah, it's, this is new adjustment. I, I was getting to. I hadn't gotten to this part yet.
Like amend the agenda to meet at two?
Yeah.
Like I say, any other item in there is that, this steady county, county meetings, anytime that, and county officials. It was doing the second floor of the office building instead of trying to have everything up there, cause that, that meeting room, whatever that is on the second floor.
Oh, out there?
Which they call Rich's Building. How's that?
Courthouse, courthouse office building.
As I say, technically, they have a conference room there at.
Three, different ones, but.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I just rather than move all them out there, especially with the county officials, since most of them are here. I'd just keep it in that building.
Okay.
There's enough room in that.
What's the name of that conference room you're meeting at it to? What do they call that? Do you know?
I actually don't know.
I'll just go FCRC conference room.
They can check with east wing if they wanna join us.
It's on the west wing, but. I don't think it really has the name, does it?
Probably goes there internally. We'll have to edit.
Conference room that you said is by Raising Riley, is it the one that they do their trainings in?
Yes.
See in the basement?
Yeah.
They call, they call it the Raising Riley conference room.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're gonna be in the basement?
Well, it's on floor, but compared to the rest of the building, it's.
It's not in the basement, there's windows.
Okay. So, when are they gonna actually pick up our stuff?
I was trying to say, what's our first meeting day? I'm trying to put that.
Yeah.
So, Sunday after July first.
So, next Monday is our last day here.
So, we have to have what we wanna take over their box. Do we need to take our computers over there? Are they gonna do?
I assume, let's ask Cory. I assume he was gonna take them, cause he's gonna move all the cords and everything.
Judging whatever I saw on Friday, I, there's basically furniture and stuff there that's usable.
Yeah, there's desks in each of those. There's already desks there.
Then they're gonna give us keys and all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So, y'all are too.
I feel like we're gonna have more fun than you are. Oh, well, needs to be done.
Yeah, it's just never a good feeling when they say, oops.
Yeah.
Whoa.
What is this?
Do you need to make a motion to adjourn after?
Yeah, they will. Uh-huh. That's our next step.
Okay, sorry.
Actually, do we need to make a motion after the intergovernmental or after the? Open house?
Open house now.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. I'll ahead make a motion that we adjourn after this afternoon's open house ribbon cutting out at the new NMS headquarters.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, excuse me, after the two-thirty ribbon ca- open house.